This meeting have come to order. The day is Tuesday, January 31st, 2017. This is a special voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Olberg.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
I want to thank everybody that took time out of their day to come in. This is a very important subject and at some point today I will be allowing the public to have any comment that they want to have. First item, and only item, I guess.
Discussion of the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Unfunded Liability and Adoption of Resolution Number 4373-1582, calling a special election on August 29th, 2017.
Councilwoman, do you want to...
Did you want me to give a quick review of...
Well, we have your options here for your review.
Okay. Okay with you, Mayor? All right. I asked Mark to do a very briefly worded list of things that the Strategic Plan Oversight Committee has presented to the council. And they're in your paper before you, as well as up on the board. First option we considered was enacting a business tax on everyone who holds a business license, or will be holding one in the next year. The second was increasing the property tax. Second was increasing city utility rates.
And number two was city property tax rate?
City property tax rate. Number four, dedicated sales tax for paying down the PSPRS debt. Number five was a dedicated sales tax with the elimination of the city property tax. Number six, reduce spending. Number seven, file bankruptcy. Number eight, use reserves. And we'll be talking a little bit more about that in detail today. Number nine, enact a municipal income tax. Number 10, get out of PSPRS. Number 11, wait for statewide relief. Number 12, issue bonds. And number 13, consider some variation on a sales tax. And at the last meeting we had, I think it was last week, Councilman Lozelle suggested that we go through the list and eliminate those items that we are not going to consider, so that we can simplify our discussion and get more focus.
And then also cross off the list that we all agree on.
Cross off the list, everything we agree on?
We agree on, so I guess my point is, the language ballot. If we're... You know, we agree that there's got to be X, let's not discuss X. If there's got to be Y, let's discuss Y and try to figure out Y and Z. Does that make sense?
Okay. All right. So...
Where they talk about things at Prescott College.
So, I guess... We could go through the reserve slides that we've put together based on comments from yesterday's meeting, and then... Or unless you want to cross off some things off the list now.
Well, first of all, if I could, I want to take some housekeeping out of the way. And I'd like to make a motion right now to get it off the table so we can move on after this. And I'd like to... Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 4373-1582 with caveat of direction to staff after this meeting to prepare ballot language to be brought back to council to vote on.
Seven.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Well, I'm in favor of the motion.
Does the date need to be in the motion?
Yes.
Date's in the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we really need to hold our feet to the fire to get the job done. As Billy said at one meeting, people keep asking us, "Why aren't you guys doing anything? Why is the debt mounting and mounting?" And if we hold our feet to the fire, and we meet weekly, get it done.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to have an election sometime in August, period. Whether it's for the primary, whether it's for home rule, we're going to have an election regardless. So that's a fact that's already there. It's already been established. What we're here to discuss is what we tag on to the election. I know we're going to have the election. I don't have a problem with the election. What we haven't done was ironed out what we're going to tag on to the election. I would prefer ironing out what we're going to tag on to the election before we agree when... And we're making it public right now. We're going to have an election. Public knows we're going to have an election. They know we're going to have an election threefold. One for the primary, one for home rule, and one for whatever we come up with to take to the public. What we haven't done was identify for the public what we're going to ask them for. Now's the time for us to vet that out and get it ironed out before we choose... Can't think of the right word. That's why we got an attorney over here on my left. Here again... No, no. Right over here.
The other left.
I have confidence in my fellow council member, equally to the one we pay.
You get paid.
Jim, I agree with you. We are going to have an election, but I'd like to make it official and say, "We've got an election."
Well, it's already there. It is official.
It's not official until we make it official.
No, no, no. What's not official is what we're going to put on the election.
Exactly.
That's not official.
And that's what... We're putting our feet to the fire after that.
Okay. So if I fully understand this, a yes vote means we're going to have an election.
Yes vote means we're telling the public today that there will be some kind of question on the ballot that has to do with PSPRS. That's what we're telling them.
Well, no. Let me clarify.
Thank you.
The forgone conclusion is that there will be a candidate election on August the 29th, the primary. The charter talks about that as being a regular election. Any ballot measure that goes on one of the four election dates, even if there's already an election in place, is considered a special election. And therefore, the council has to call for a special election, even though it basically lays on top of the general election. So your decision today is simply to say, "We're going to call for a special election on August 29th by way of this resolution. At a minimum, it's likely that the home rule question will be on that ballot." Because that's something that sort of needs to happen. It's somewhat of... I don't want to get ahead of myself, but it's somewhat of a formality. And so that's... Later on, that becomes a question of, "Do you put that ballot item on the agenda... on that?" And then the second question that you're discussing today is, "Do you put, in addition to that home rule item, do you put a question on the ballot regarding PSPRS, sales tax, or whatever?" So just because you're calling a special election doesn't necessarily mean that a ballot measure regarding a PSPRS solution goes on that. It doesn't have to go on that. It can, though.
But that's what I just motioned, and it was seconded, and we're in discussion now.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Mayor Protim, I know we have been meeting now for months and discussing this, and it's been really good dialogue. And I think that we need to give a message to our citizens and to our employees that we are going to move forward, come with solutions to stabilize our general fund for our city. So I believe that we're doing that today by voting yes on what Councilman Lozelle has made a motion for.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. What we haven't decided yet, and I've stuck to this for a long time, a permanent funding source for police and fire, period. And we wouldn't be in this boat if we had addressed this a number of years ago. But we are in this boat, and this is the opportunity to iron this out, and the citizens have a right to know ahead of time, what are we going to put on that ballot?
Jim, there's no language on this ballot right now.
And I know that.
We're going to do that.
I know that. All right? But I don't feel comfortable saying, "We're going to go to the ballot," when we don't know what we're going to put on the ballot. I'd like to know what we're going to put on the ballot before I support it. If all we're going to put on the ballot is we want to address PSPRS, PSPRS is only part of what we need to address here.
I agree.
All right? The minute you put that language on there, then it becomes official. All we're going to put on the ballot is PSPRS. And that may not be true.
I don't know why we're arguing about that.
That's what I just got.
I don't understand.
You know, Jim, I can understand why you want a permanent funding source for PSPRS, or for police and fire, I'm sorry. But if we were to put a permanent funding source on PS... on police and fire years ago, that funding source wouldn't have held up today. We would be far below what we owe due to police and fire. So I'm really reticent to say, "I want to limit police and fire to a particular funding source."
If I could, my fellow council members, this resolution doesn't say anything specific, whether it's perpetuity, 10 years, 7.5, 2.5, half this, half that. It just says, "We're going to have an election concerning this issue on the 29th of August." That's all it says.
And I support that.
Dana, I wonder if you could read the resolution. I didn't bring my coffee.
Resolution Number 4373-1582, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, providing notice of a special election to be held on August 29th, 2017, and authorizing the city clerk to enter into any agreements necessary to provide services for such election. Do you want me to read the whole thing? Whereas the holding of a special election is enabled by law and prescribed by the City of Prescott Charter, and whereas the mayor and city council desire to hold a special election for a ballot measure on April 20... or on August 29th, 2017, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Prescott as follows: that a city of Prescott special election be held on Tuesday, August 29th, 2017, for the purpose of voting on a citywide ballot measure. Section 2, that the city clerk is authorized to enter into any agreements with the Yavapai County Elections Department and any necessary vendors to provide election services for the August 29th, 2017 special election. That the election shall be held in accordance with the provisions of applicable state statutes, city charter provisions, city code, and ordinances and resolutions of the city, passed and approved and adopted by the mayor and council of the city of Prescott.
Thank you. I agree with that resolution. That doesn't quantify that it has to be strictly on PSPRS.
Is that consistent with your motion?
That's exactly what I just quoted that one. I said, "Resolution 4273-1582." That's what that says.
Okay, we're going with the ordinance, or what was it?
Resolution.
It's a resolution.
Yeah, a resolution, as written. I fully concur. Any other comments or questions?
Could you... Do you want to state the rest of that motion, though?
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution 4373-1582, with direction to staff to prepare ballot language to be brought back to council after we've discussed it, to be voted upon by the council.
Okay. Those in favor, vote.
Passes unanimously.
So, based on the discussion yesterday, we prepared some information on the reserves the city has. That was a discussion that Councilman Lamerson started or initiated again yesterday. So on the screen and in your handouts, I have the budgeted reserves for the general fund and our enterprise funds that have positive fund balances. As you can see, our fund balances have several things that are reserved in them. So even though in the general fund, we project a $28 million fund balance this year, that doesn't mean it's all available for something. It is reserved for certain things. We have an operational policy by the city council of 20% of operating expenses. That is the $6.6 million that's first there. That is to cover fluctuations in the economy, timing of receipts to disbursements, and to be able to operate the city effectively, you need to have a reserve. There's long-term obligations in the general fund related to the previous vacation and retirement payouts and things that the council eliminated a few years ago. But there are still some of those hanging out there. That amount goes down each year, but it does exist. In the other funds, the long-term liability is related to that, but also related to bonds that have been issued in those other funds. We have an internal loan in the general fund, which we talk about every year during the budget process, to our golf course. And that is an item that council will have... will discuss again this year during budget, and we can decide what we'll do at that time. But that's another $4.4 million of that fund balance that doesn't exist until the golf course pays it back. There is a capital projects, economic development reserve in the general fund related to a resolution council passed several years ago. There's only $853,000 left in that fund that gets used every year to fund the airport and those things, so probably not going to exist after this year. In the other funds, you can see a much larger capital projects. Again, our water rates and our wastewater rates and solid waste rates are designed at a zero-profit level. They're meant to cover operations and accumulations for capital projects. So those are those reserves. After we take out those reserves, we have an unassigned fund balance, which is $13.3 million in the general fund at the end of this fiscal year that we're in right now, projected. That, you know, it's unassigned, that doesn't mean we don't use it. We use it every year for capital projects that come in in the general fund, rodeo ground projects, which we had this year, regional dispatch, computer-aided dispatch system this year, and other capital needed safety projects and other things, and parks. I think there were some of those in there this year. So we use that amount. Now, that amount accumulates from revenues coming in in excess of budgeted amounts or expenditures not being spent up to budgeted amounts each year. So it accumulates very slowly over time, and then we use it for these one-time capital expenses. And economic development, the Trader Joe Economic Development Project we did, the money came out of this unassigned. And then when that project was complete and repaid, it went back into this unassigned.
Mark, Mayor, if I can... Can we ask questions along the way?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think one question that I can't put my arms around, at least I don't hear enough. What is our debt this year to PSPRS?
What is our...
What is our payment?
Our payment this year to PSPRS in fiscal... in fiscal year 2017 is six... about $6.3 million.
What is it anticipated to be next year?
$7.5.
And do you have it the following year?
No. I do, I just don't have it on the top of my head.
It doesn't go down, though.
No, it doesn't go down. We had a graph in last week's presentation that showed that out, and I could pull that up if the councilmen would like.
I think the important part is, is to let the community know, and the folks who are in the audience, that this is truly a debt that we owe, or an obligation, and it's not going to go away. And the bottom line to it is, as we keep having a higher amount every single year, if we don't pay down the principal, the interest is going to eat us up, and it's going to be more and more every single year. The point I'm trying to get across, at least early on here, is with our new city manager sitting there and the things that he has done with some of the department heads and reorganization, we don't have the money. And the bottom line is, every single year, we're going to have to take extraordinary moves in our budget to pay this off if we don't have an influx of money. Is that a fair statement?
That is. And I pulled up that schedule for you, Councilman. You can see, we're $7.5 next year, then we increase to just under 8, just over 8, 8.5, and so on, as we go out to about $10 million by 2025.
My point becomes, is not only am I concerned about the firemen and the policemen, I'm concerned about the quality of life in this community. As we sit here right now, and Gina and I talk about it, I love the library, but every time I bring it up, this is another year we're going to lose, another day in the library. We're going to lose Parks and Recreation, or parts of that. We're going to lose more employees if we don't find a funding source. And that's just pure and simple. That's not the sky is falling, that's not any kind of rush to hubbub. And six years from now, as you look this schedule out, if we do nothing, we don't have a library in six years that's boarded up, and we don't have a Parks and Recreation. This is serious business we're here to talk about, and we have to find an answer.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. I can concur 100%. Blair, it is very serious. Here again, standard best practices, would a city's keep in reserve percentage-wise of their budget?
Your policy's 20%. I've seen communities that industry standard is usually 15 to 25. So that's right in the middle. Is that pretty much what you've heard from general accounting practices, Mark?
Definitely. It used to be much lower in the 90s, but when the economy started to fluctuate rapidly, you know, cities needed to build reserves so that we can continue to operate in economic downturns.
So 15... Yeah. 15 to 25% of our budget is far less than what we have in general fund reserve. I mean, I don't think I missed anything.
That's correct. No, you're 100% correct. Yeah.
Here again, if we go with 3/4 of a cent is an estimated number, which generates approximately $9.75 million, it's going to be eaten up. So from my perspective, what we need to do is pay this down to where we can get more on the increased... I don't like the word "interest" because it's not interest. But if we could get down to about a $50 million instead of $7.78, all of a sudden, the picture changes. And if we need to use the reserves to do that, we need to contemplate that as part of the modus operandi, so to speak, in order, number one, not to diminish our quality of life, our library, our general government, our... whatever the other thing was there, Parks and Recreation. Okay? Because every year, this is the same argument. Okay? We know that 9.75 isn't going to fix this. So how do you use a 9.75 at the highest and best opportunity you can, will pay off some of what we got? And to do that, we're probably going to have to dip into some of the reserves. And instead of broaching, paying the $83 million, or $79 million, or whatever it is with a 9.75, we start paying a whole lot more against what we owe when you're down to about $50 million. So I'm just sharing with you, that's what's on my mind, is to try and accomplish something different. And I really feel kind of reluctant to say, if you don't pay on PSPRS only, because you could have another catastrophic event in this community of some kind, where you might have to use police and fire differently than just PSPRS. And if you keep that flexibility, you keep that flexibility, you deal with it every budgetary year in the budget. And I guess what you can kind of contemplate is, I'm coming from the position that we dedicate a certain portion of the dollars we have coming into this community for police and fire protection, period.
Well, when he says that, they get real clear. If we borrow the money, can we borrow internal funds? In other words, can we borrow, as an example, $10 million from the water fund and $10 million maybe from the unassigned, where we put $20 million down? Do we have to pay those funds back if we can borrow them with interest? How does that work?
The council's policy does allow council... for internal borrowing for periods of less than a year, periods of more than a year, that is done by council resolution with the stated interest rate in that. The concern with that is, obviously, if we borrow $10 million from the water reserve, that's going to affect our capital projects for next year. We're not going to be able to do certain projects in the water fund.
My point to bringing that up is, if we paid down this principal, then if we do a 10-year, or whatever the case may be with, you know, this percentage we're going to go to the public and ask for, we can pay that back sooner than later within a 10-year period of time.
Yes, absolutely. And that's similar to the external borrowing that we talked about with the bond issue. If we go just through the next two slides and then come back to that, because I think there's a point we need to just make known on the last slide. Councilman Lamerson's point is obviously true. I've put in here three different scenarios on the PSPRS funding. So we either don't do any additional over or required funding, which is our first column, none as far as additional funding. We have a liability of $78.445. We're at 31.1% combined funding rate. Our PSPRS rates are there 85 and 91. We're going to pay $7.5, $7.6 next year, which is what we were talking about. That's 1.25 over our current year payment. So if we pay off $4 million, you know, next week, tomorrow, today, it obviously...
Mark, can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
So the $7.595, that's coming out of our general fund, which is...
Yes. No, that's coming out of the general fund operations.
But that is 37 million?
33.
30? Okay.
33 million.
Operating at 37 for...
Yeah, the 37 included use of reserves. So our revenue source is about 33, 34.
So $7.5 million that we have to pay to the debt out of our general fund of 33 million. That is... And the rest is what we run, fire, police, library, parks.
That's correct. And then the other two columns show if we made a payment of $4 million or $10 million. And obviously, that pulls down your unfunded liability, increases your funding ratio, as shown there. It reduces your future PSPRS contribution rates. The impact would not be 7.5, it'd be 7.231 and 6.68. So you can see the difference in that bottom number, there are $363,000 less a year for $4 million and $908 for $10 million. These numbers were derived using the valuation from the June 30 actuarial report, and I used the salary projections for 2017 to project the cost. And I split the contribution evenly between our two trusts, just to cover some of the assumptions, because obviously, in doing something like this, there's a lot of assumptions. So to further your question, Councilman, the final slide is, I plotted the yield from PSPRS. The green bar is the long-term assumed rate from the actuarial. The, I guess, purple bar, the seven-year smoothing rate, is actually what PSPRS has been using to set the valuation rates the last few years, so I included it as information. And then to give it some context of the economy, I added the percentage change in the Dow Jones average over that time. And as you can see, they earn approximately the way the Dow Jones average fluctuates. It's real similar. The problem with borrowing money outside, borrowing money inside, or even doing lump sum payments is, you know, you borrow when they have a year that they earn 13%, and that's great. You added 13% on what you contributed that year additional. Obviously, if they have a downturn the year that you decide to contribute and they go down 13%, you lose 13% of what you contributed. It's like any of your investments, when you invest your retirement or just your savings, you know, you don't throw all your money at the market and one day you buy it out over time, you dollar-cost average. So paying down the debt is not a bad idea, it's a good idea. And to use reserves makes sense if they're not needed for other things. Obviously, we discussed all this during the budget process. You know, as opposed to paying $10 million down tomorrow, you'd probably be better off paying $4 million or $2 million down this year, $2 million more than you're required next year, and bring it down over time.
So in short, Mark, to answer the question, we can if the council chose to.
Absolutely. And it's the same as borrowing outside money, though. There's that same risk. So the more you pay, the bigger that... at one point, the bigger that risk. You want to spread that out.
I think what we're trying to do here, and if I'm not speaking for Jim, but maybe Steve, we're not necessarily looking for one, you know, during these discussions, to come up with, "Let's just go 1.75 to the public." Let's see what we can do internally to bring that number down. And then we've exhausted everything and showed good faith that we've used a little bit of reserve, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, massage it some, and going, "Okay, now this is what our final... our number that we're looking to help for."
Just as a point, you know, Mark alluded to, if you borrowed from the other funds as a loan, you set the interest rate.
Right.
It would be nice and low.
Yeah. So you might set it at nothing.
52%.
And that... Yeah, and that's by council policy and the...
We could make some money then.
The interim rate is set at the state treasure pool rate.
That's good.
You ready for questions?
Sure.
Okay. Councilwoman Wilcox.
Hmm.
She forgot.
Well, I wanted clarification of the $9.75 million that you mentioned, Jim. Well, I wanted clarification of the 9.75 million that you mentioned, Jim.
That's approximately what three-quarters of a cent generates.
Oh, okay. All right. And that's if we dedicated that amount to pay down the PSPRS?
Well, that's what it generates. What, at this point in time, I'm opposed to, and I'm only one of seven people up here, what I'm opposed to is hamstringing management, because there may be years that you need that 975 for a catastrophic event. And if you've already limited yourself to it having to go for PSPRS, you've kind of crippled the goose, so to speak. So, the full intent of keeping police and fire whole is to pay off what we owe. I mean, you've got to have the money in the budget to do it.
But if we had a dedicated sales tax, we would free up that amount-
That's right.
...from the general fund, which could then be spent on police and fire operations and library and recreation.
In understanding that at the current model structure, police and fire services in the city of Prescott costs approximately 23, 24 million dollars. One cent sales tax only generates approximately 14 million, okay? So, the 975 gets you to just about 23, what you need for police and fire, if you had the whole one cent plus the 0.75. So, what I'm saying is that at the current rate of exchange, and the more that we use out of the 175 to pay this down, the quicker, not only does it get paid down, but the more solvent our police and fire become.
Okay. Good point.
Thank you.
Well, you're up next. Do you have more to say? Mayor Protam?
No, no, I'll let somebody else talk too.
Okay.
You know, I do. Just, you know, I do, because I know something. You know, I didn't feel like I got a spanking yesterday, but I did get a lecture, all right? And I just want to share with you that Prescott's not the only community dealing with this. Arizona Law Enforcement Academy, I guess that comes through the state legislature, these guys put 47 people on due for PSPRS prior to July 1. Mesa Police Department, 41. Maricopa Sheriff's Office, Southern Arizona, blah, 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 a total of 250 law enforcement officers, which are absolutely necessary personnel to have in this state, were put on. So, you know, I kind of resented the way we were treated yesterday. But on the other hand, I understand it, because we're all frustrated. But it almost seems to me, maybe the legislature needs to clean up its own backyard before it comes up here and lectures me.
Amen.
Councilman Chisca.
I say amen, Councilman Lamerson. Thank you. Also, I think at the very least, we need to take a look at using reserves to, give us a little timeout to, if our added liability or added payment next year is 1.2 million, at the very, very least, we need to take that 1.2 million out of reserve, so that we're not biting, kicking, and scratching, and we get a little time off from putting pressure on our public service agencies.
Do you mean as a loan or just take it out?
No, I mean just, I mean just using reserve to pay the additional what we owe.
Councilwoman Orr.
And I would add to that, Steve, that we also, within that, not just maintain what we've got right now, but we also be able to continue with our market compensation plan to our employees, which we instated last year, because if we just stay where we are, that has to come off the table. So, because we need to make sure that we take care of that. Mayor Protam, I thought we did get a little bit of a spanking yesterday.
Well, I thought we got a heck of a lecture, but you know what? If I didn't have a trust in my chief-
Yeah.
...and my law enforcement officers, I wouldn't do what they asked me to do, all right? Now, they're here in River City with me every day, and I realize that we had two people that are also residents of the city and voters of the city too. But, you know, the state, for them to come up here and give that lecture was fine. They have that right. And I have the right to say today, okay, you guys gave that shot over the bow, you did your damage. Let us take care of our own community. You don't like the federal government stepping on your toes, well, stop stepping on ours.
Well, and I do, as being a member of the three committee that we, for strategic planning, we looked at these 11. And Chairman Wilcox, I would like for us to revisit these 11 for a few minutes as a council. Take those off, take those off that we're not going to consider. I mean, I think there are some that, certainly the one with increasing property tax, because we can only increase it 2 percent, business tax.
But I think before we go there-
Okay.
Because this is a long list. And we have not addressed things that I want to address. And one, which Councilman Lizelle and I have hanging in our office, is all the properties the city of Prescott owns in the city of Prescott.
Number 14.
That list you have-
That was my buzzard. I'm up for that. Don't take my thunder.
The bottom line to it is, whether it's a water, a water piece of property out in Chino Valley where we own 600 acres and we need one acre for a pump, you know, for the well, why are we retaining that many acres, number one? Why haven't we sold Station Number 7 on Sixth Street, Number 2? We have all this money out there that can go to these individual funds that we can still borrow from to pay down this debt. We can't borrow a piece of property. But one thing we can do is liquidate what we're not using within the city's holdings to better give us an opportunity to switch money around in accounts to pay this debt down.
I absolutely agree.
That's one thing we can do.
Absolutely agree.
Okay, you're up next. So, are you done now or?
Yep.
Okay.
Handcuffed me.
Councilman Lizelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Steve. Michael, you weren't here, so, you know, you can blame the last guy.
I like plausible deniability.
But I have a list here. I'll give it right to you. You can look at it. And in this list was every piece of property, you can look at the map in my office, piece of property the city owns. And like Councilman Blair said, if we own 10 acres in Chino for a wellhead, why can't we just keep an acre and sell the rest off, keep the rights, whatever? You know, I'm not an attorney or an accountant, but it makes sense to me. We've got property down Easy Street, Sixth Street, that we're holding trailers and whatnots in it. We have a rodeo ground we're not going to sell, with this lot in the back that could hold those things. Why don't we sell that lot? I mean, go through this one by one.
I'd be glad to do that. And I think-
And I would, like our feet through the fire, I'd like a response of why we can or cannot on every one of those in the next two or three meetings.
I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Okay.
I think it's actually a reasonable request. And if it's not put, it's not part of a long-term plan, then we should think about unloading it. I don't disagree with you.
You know, and a lot of them are, there's a water tower there.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a lot of these that are a no-go.
But I would like an explanation on them, why we can't sell them.
We can go by these-
Or we can partially sell them, or what would happen if we sold them.
We could certainly go through this land parcel by land parcel, I'll tell you that.
Well, it shows the public that we're willing to unload stuff and try to make a difference before we go out there and ask them for money.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protam, you're up next. Do you have some-
No, yeah, I do. I love this dialogue. I feed off of this crap. The other 599 acres, we got our acre we need our wellhead on. Okay, and while I realize that money came out of the ratepayers that are some customers in the city, some are not, but the money goes back into the water fund. And having discussed certain things through attorney, if I'm not mistaken, if by resolution, we were to dump the 599 acres proceeds back into the water fund, that money could be channeled over into the general fund, at which point could be used to reduce our liability to the PSPRS.
We'd have to borrow it.
As that, yeah, as function of that loan or a lending-type resolution, yeah.
At least we're paying down the principal.
The point there being, Steve, here's my argument. We haven't vetted out all of our options. It's difficult for me to say, I want to go to the voters unless we do this. I don't mind going to the voters, because it's their money and it's their assets, all right? I don't have a problem going to the voters, but I want to get it right when we do go to the voter. I don't want to lose this one again. Our community can't afford it, and our cops and firemen can't afford it.
Now, I'm done.
Well, I don't know if anybody else up here on the board, but-
The light's burned out.
Probably so, yeah. Well, some people wanted to punch in, but let me just go ahead and say a couple of things. You know, I was talking with Mark Whitfield today, and we talked about the possibility of wastewater buying the golf course for what's owed there. And you said the big problem there was, we've already agreed to a centralization of the wastewater. And so, that would probably take too much money out of that fund. Now, could you do it in piecemeal?
I've referred to legal. I would assume you could do it any way you want. I'm not sure. Again, when we were talking, we talked about getting legal to give us an opinion on enterprise buying another enterprise for the 4.4 million owed to the general fund, I think was the discussion.
My thought process on the wastewater enterprise buying the golf course enterprise is that there's a somewhat of a natural or logical connection, and that is that the golf course uses effluent. So, the golf course becomes, it's almost like you use landfills for park purposes. There's sort of multiple, there's multiple purposes for, multiple functions to a landfill that could be used as a park or even a golf course.
The Greenbelt in Scottsdale.
Right. It's a flood zone that's probably owned, or a lot of it's probably funded by the Maricopa County Flood Control District. But it's, there are golf courses, bike paths, so on and so forth. So, there is that ability to convey or transfer the golf course. I think wastewater, the wastewater fund is the most logical kind of transfer over for whatever, and I would suggest that it's, whether the golf course is worth just 4.4 million, or whether it's worth more money, I think that's an assessment that should be done. Because the golf course has a certain value as an ongoing concern, but the golf course also has value as something else. In other words, you know, it has potential for development, it has other things. So, I think if you're going to do that, I think you really need to look at what the true value, what the true sort of market value, some sort of appraisal or something of what the golf course is worth. And then, in theory, and we'd have to work out the details, but the wastewater fund would sort of purchase that golf course from the general fund, whether it's to take, to assume the loan for the 4.4, or whether it's $10 million, whatever the value is, I think it should be sort of an arms-length deal, as it were.
It should be a good deal, because public works, we don't want them to flip it.
Well, I mean, obviously, you could put a deed restriction on it. But I guess the, I'm not sure, though, what you mean by sort of piecemeal. In other words, you buy the whole golf course-
Well, if you said it was worth 5 million, that every, for five years, they pay a million dollars.
Sort of like a seller carryback, yeah. It could be done that way as well, right. Yeah, I thought you were splitting up holes and conveying it piece by piece. But, yeah, it could be done as a over-time type purchase, too. Sure. It's just a structure, it's a deal structure.
And just to keep in mind, to further that conversation we had, the wastewater fund is not one of our healthier funds. As council will remember, several years ago, we increased the rates relatively significantly to start accumulate capital, money for the centralization and the other impacts there. And it is an increase that has been noted by our ratepayers, as we hear from them in the utility billing area quite often, about the fact that, and for better or worse, there's some issue when wastewater is more than your water bill, which is where we are now with our wastewater rate. And Henry's chomping at the bed here, so.
Okay, do you want to say something on that before I go to my next issue?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yes, if I can offer some information. About two years ago or so, the council directed us to go with centralization, which is a very good decision. We can always second-guess the decision that were made some 40 or 50 years ago, but I think at any given time, everybody makes the best decision that they can. So, 50 or 60 years ago, the decision was that we had a sundog plant and an airport plant. Right now, by no choice, we either had to upgrade the sundog plant, and I remember numbers, generally don't forget numbers, at the cost of $54 million. That's not a choice. We had to do, order by the state, or centralize. The reason I said about decisions previously, city size of Prescott doesn't necessarily need two treatment plants, we can do. Instead of upgrading an old plant, $54 million, we still remain two plants. If we centralized, we would spend $42 million, get rid of one plant, to have a state-of-the-art one plant. This is the direction you gave us, I think it's a great direction, we appreciate that. We are in the process of working. Other than $42 million that we need, plus many millions for other things, we have $8 million sitting there. There is no money in wastewater. We have to do it. These things generally take time. It's extremely complicated, as you well know, the most complicated system in the state of Arizona. Design, sophisticated design, it takes one or two years. We have started doing it gradually. We've spent some money to go to complete the whole thing, as you directed, in the next four years. Really the same thing with water. One thing I brought up to the council, and council was very pleased, remember, Councilman Lizelle says it's about time we hear something, and this really a replacement program for our system. This is a problem we have nationwide. We have a backlog in the trillions of dollars, starting with T, because we have a bad culture of saying, out of sight, out of mind. City of Prescott, 152 years old, and some of our infrastructures are very close to that age. We really didn't do much, because we didn't see them. Now, it's coming to an age that they're going to need a lot of attention. If you don't do something and spend plenty of money, we're going to have a disaster, not necessarily next year or two years, maybe five or eight or nine years. So, council directed me two years ago, when we brought the replacement policy, to come back with more information and more detail. I am ready to come to you. I have the information. That would add huge amount of needed dollars in addition to what we have today, if we want to put a replacement program in place. Almost all the work that we have been doing in the last many years in water and wastewater, just putting fire out, fixing something that just failed or about to fail. In wastewater part, in addition to that, we are told to do by the state and the federal government to spend many, many millions because of all the issues we have had. So, it's not a matter of choice. I would hope to bring you a program to put a replacement policy, so people 10, 15, 20, 50 years from now do not have to deal with 400, 500. I believe between water and wastewater, our assets are almost $1 billion. We cannot afford to let it go down, because we can't afford 100, 200 million dollars. But that's where I stand.
Henry, I appreciate, you know, what you do and what you're bringing to us. What we've got to realize is, we're not a community of silos. And, I mean, we could have the best sewer system and nobody's here. So, you know, we had to look at seven, eight, nine years, like your thing, just like we're looking at PSPRS. And I totally get it. I really do.
Thanks, Henry. I know you don't want to get your ox cord, so we understand it. But it was just an idea that's been put out. I thought we'd bring it up to the council here and talk about it and see what, whether or not it had any applicability.
Understood. And obviously, we comply and respect all the decisions made by this council. My job is to provide you with the best information I have, and you make the decisions and the policy.
Yep. Thank you. The other thing, of course, you know, we talked about whether or not we'd take 1 million, 1 million, 0.25 out of our reserves, or 5 million, or 4 million, or 10 million. You know, I was talking to an investment broker yesterday, and he indicated that there's strong indication in the market right now that we're going to see a major downturn at the end of '17. So, I know when I talked to Mr. Whitfield some time ago, he said, you know, if we paid him 10 million right now, and then they, there was a major downturn and they lost a portion of that money, then that would just be adding much more to our liability that we would have to pay in the future. So, I think maybe it makes sense right now, if it looks like maybe a downturn is possible, to be going with the lower numbers, you know, like 1.25 or maybe not more than 5, so that we do keep- we do keep enough funding in the reserve, because we do know that back in '07 and '08, we had to draw on our reserves fairly extensively because of the loss of sales tax revenue from the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and again, these dips that you see on here hit our local economy as well, especially the one in '07 and '08. We saw a big downturn, we had to dip into those, we had to do mid-year cuts and all that kind of stuff. But since, and we had to eliminate vehicle replacement funding and things like that, all of that comes out of that unassigned fund balance now, so definitely, Mayor, good comments.
Councilwoman Orr.
I'm going to wait.
You're going to wait?
Because I think other people want to discuss, I would like to get to the list. So I think people want to wait to get.
I would, too, but I want to clarify some things.
Councilwoman Shizka.
You know, I appreciate looking for ways in which we can kind of switch this to a wealthier fund. On here, I see the only relatively wealthy fund is the general fund. And so I don't want this to turn into a shell game. I want us to make real improvements in our lot. And so whatever we do, we can't just be switching numbers to funds. I think that we really do, like Greg talked about, and Steve talked about, selling property that we don't need.
Little this, little that.
Yeah. But let's make, whatever we do, let's make it real.
Yeah.
Rather than perceived.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lizelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I have a, and I'm not asking this to confuse myself, because I think that's what I'm going to do, and others, and I try to stay on track of what we're talking about here. But we keep talking about, we don't want to give them too much money. Okay? Well, you stay with me on this, okay? Am I right? We don't want to give them too much money? Like, if we had 10 million right now, we wouldn't want to give it to them, in your opinion?
If that's all the money you had to give them, you know, I would suggest you pay it out over a period of time to take advantage of the fluctuating market and not get impacted by it. If you had 10 million more a year, yes, you would send them 10 million a year. It's just if all you got is this one shot, is 10 million, you don't want to throw it all at once, you want to.
My way of thinking here, the way I'm, so we, let's just say we have $9 million we're raising with this tax, and let's say it's not in perpetuity, let's say it goes right, we've all agreed, let's just say it goes to PSPRS. Would we take that $9 million every year, hypothetical here, and give 9 million bucks?
Yes, because that would be a series of payments over time.
Okay. We wouldn't hold back, too, because next year might be, okay. That's what I'm just trying to clarify.
And again, we're not trying to time a market, we aren't market timers, we aren't investment gurus.
But since we don't have that fund, we have to play it safer.
Right, we're going to regularly invest.
Okay. I needed to get that, wrap my head around that. Okay.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
I love this creative thinking. It's great. I think when we consider some of these options, like disposing of excess property and borrowing or using reserves, we have to remember that they're short-term. You know, there's, once we get rid of the property, there's no more money from that. So we still need a long-term revenue source.
Absolutely.
Steve Larsson.
And Jean Olss, I was just saying that for, is, you know, I've heard people say this for a long time. What have you done? You know, we've obviously, Michael's done some things, things before Michael got here, the city, and we have done to show good faith in this. But I just want to go that extra step to show the taxpayers in good faith that we've tried everything and done everything we can do.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. And Greg, appreciate your comments. Gina, appreciate yours. Fact of the matter still remains, if we pay this down to a palatable form, and as I heard Lamar down here at TNC say, we've got 23 million in reserve, the standard, good practice of city management, et cetera, is this much, 25% of your budget or whatever. Here, again, if you look at the impact of paying the 9.75 minus what you took out of the reserve to pay it down, the impact of increase in the, it's, for the lack of a better word, interest, I hate that, but.
The vig?
Well, whatever it is, it's not interest, it's liability, is, would be significant. That's my point. So you can further demonstrate to the public, here's what we're doing, all right, along with, we will be selling off property. Now, is it all going to happen tomorrow? No. But at least if you've demonstrated, you're serious about taking care of the problem, all right? You're serious about identifying a mechanism to eliminate not only the liability, but to secure a permanent funding source for police and fire, which are two of your most critical basic services we can deliver.
Councilwoman Orr.
Well, I wondered if we might be ready to go to the list. I would like to say one thing, though, about yesterday. I think we got some really valuable information yesterday, that two things that are on the list. One was bankruptcy, and thank you, Mr. Palladini. I think because of your presentation and what we realized the cost of that to our city, that's certainly one that we can just take right off the list. And I think that delivers a great message to our community. The other one I would like to talk about is number 11, waiting for the statewide relief. And we've talked several times for weeks and weeks about a two-prong approach. Yesterday, Barry Aaron's mentioned a three-prong. But with that two-prong approach, we will work with the state, doing whatever it is that we can do to assist them as far as reform. However, we need to take care of Prescott. We heard yesterday from our representatives that there is, there's not the palate at the legislature to take this on, and that they are doing some things to clean up language for 124 with PSPRS. But as far as, I was sitting here expecting the state to come in and take care of this, it's not going to happen. And I think that was a really clear message yesterday. Do you guys agree?
I do, but can we start at number one, because I'm going to get lost if we skip around.
Sure. Yeah. Well, number one, I emphatically say, let's take that off the list, because we passed a business license with, absolutely, this will not become a business tax for us to turn around this year and say, guess what, now we're going to tax you. I think that is a really bad message to our community.
That needs to go away, I agree.
Well, I agree with you. In addition to that, it just isn't fair to tax one sector of the community.
That's exactly right.
Especially the ones doing the business.
That's right. And we're trying to increase business, so why would we do that? Absolutely, thank you.
Right, it's counter to our economic development goal.
Okay. Increase property tax, we can do 2% a year, and that's limited by state law.
Which I believe we're already doing.
Yes, we are.
We already tax to the max on property.
And that increase last year gave us $65,000.
Yeah, we can't increase, we can't increase the rate, right?
No.
We cannot increase the rate.
You're just going to go date law.
Yes.
2%.
So that's off the list.
Mayor, if I could just procedurally, if you're going to sort of vet through these and weed out ones and kind of throw them out permanently, then I think you just need to make sure that, for instance, business tax item number one, there is, I guess if you want a consensus, just make sure everybody's on board with throwing that one out. I think, you know, increase property tax and income tax.
So we're not sending the next message to Stan?
Well, increase property tax, income tax, they can strike through because both are not legal, but.
That's right.
But the business taxes is a discretion. So just, I just think, so it's a clear on the record what you're throwing out.
Just raise your hand.
Does everybody agree, kind of thing?
Well, I think I got a consensus from the council, they want to eliminate consideration of the business tax.
Yes.
Thank you.
And two's gone.
And the property tax is illegal.
Property tax.
Yeah, I will say on the property tax, right now, we're getting 1.684. I think it'll go up a little bit each year, maybe a couple hundred thousands up.
On the property tax?
Yeah, the city property tax.
It's 2%, so it's about 30,000. We had 60 this year because we hadn't done it for two years, so it's 2%.
But overall, I think it's what the mayor's.
Plus new growth, which is, yeah, which is not a huge amount.
And my discussion with Barry Aaron, he says, this would be a very hard rock to push uphill to get anybody at the legislature to allow us to have an increase in property tax, even if it was just for PSPRS, paying PSPRS down. So I think I have a consensus from the council that we can eliminate number two for consideration.
Yes.
Yes, yes. You know, our committee looked pretty, pretty hard at the, because it was recommended by others on council to look at the city utility rates. And Councilwoman Wilcox, I believe it was 40%, we would have to increase our rates, and we are already the highest in the area.
Yeah, Billy, I put a little pin to this, and it would have been $30 on a residence, and $175 on a business. And so if you want to talk about a regressive fee or tax or whatever, that's it.
I should get rid of it.
I agree.
I would agree.
You know, the comments on number three? Yeah, I think I have a consensus of the council that they want to eliminate number three for consideration.
I believe certainly number four is one that we need to continue to talk about, and that is the dedicated sales tax.
So we put a circle around that?
I put a star by it, yeah. You know, that's the teacher in me, a star by something, that's good. And number five, the dedicated sales tax with elimination of property tax.
No.
You know, one of the things we've also talked about is that we need to really keep this simple, because we need this to pass. It must pass. This actually muddies the water. I understood the visionary side of this, because we can never raise that property tax unless we get rid of it, and then we go back to the voters later on with it. So I understood that, so I am for taking that away.
I'm for taking, removing that as well, because if we do have another recession, that property tax, as small as it is, gives us a little bit of a cushion to fall back on.
Exactly, right.
I don't think 1.6 million is that small, unless somebody wants to give it to me in my checkbook.
And we were actually looking at giving back to the residents, I mean, to people, too, so even though they were going to be paying more in sales tax, they would pay less in property. So there was some other rationale in that, but I think, again, it muddies the water, it takes it away from being simple.
Yeah, seems like people thought that it would be two steps forward, one step back, and that's not what we wanted to portray in this situation.
I guess the other thing.
And I don't think we can give up any of our dedicated funding streams right now, because, you know, right now, the construction, sales tax, I guess it is, if they centralized that at state, that's $2.2 million that we could lose. And so obviously, if there's a good chance that we could possibly lose any of these other funding streams, then it would be a poor choice to try and get rid of the property tax. So I think I have a consensus of the council to eliminate number five from consideration.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Number six, reduce spending. I think we're all for that, two stars. And certainly, Michael Lamar has already displayed that, I think $600,000 with some reorganization that he's done, so that's.
Yeah, and I don't know if you want to include in that reduced spending and look at alternative service delivery models.
Absolutely.
I know that's something that Mayor Protem's passionate about as well. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct. I mean, there are alternative service delivery that you can look at for expenditure cuts.
Well, this item is going to make a lot of people nervous, because they're going to start thinking the library's going to go, Parks and Rec is going to go. But I think what I'm hearing from every member of the council is that we want to maintain and sustain our quality of life here.
That's right.
I don't think we're looking to ax things, we're looking to make things more efficient.
Or at least explore the possibility. And no actions would be taken that wouldn't have council approval and consideration.
And I would even go in to say, we're tackling this goal, first goal in our strategic plan, stabilize our general fund, so that we can take care of the other three goals in our strategic plan, quality of life, customer service, and economic development.
But we can't, we can't reduce spending on the backs of our employees.
That's right, absolutely. That's why that market compensation.
It's got to stay there.
That's right.
I've been on here long enough to see it drop off in how much damage it did the first time.
Absolutely.
And how much more damage it did the second time, and I'm not willing to do that.
And I think when we talk about reduced spending, it's the type of stuff that we've been doing with Michael.
Just trying to be more efficient and find different ways to get the job done. I get it.
So on the reduced spending, I totally agree with it. I think, you know, I think within the last several years, we've gone from about 500 personnel down to 400 personnel. I know that recently, we looked at consolidating some activities, possibly contracting them out, and we think we can contract them out at a cheaper price. So I think reduced spending is definitely one that we ought to keep, and I think I have a consensus of the council to continue to look at reducing spending from government services.
And number seven, bankruptcy?
That's gone.
Out of here.
I think we ought to, yeah, throw that one off the table.
Absolutely.
Too many, too many bad implications.
Well, let me just say about bankruptcy, obviously, if we lose the 0.75 on a vote, and we continue to have further liability increases, it might be something in the future. But I think in the short run, I think we need to put that definitely on hold, and I think there's a consensus from the council to not consider it at this time.
Correct.
And number eight, use reserves. I believe we've certainly, we should.
I mean, it's not off the table.
Definitely take a look at that, yes, yeah, yeah.
Any further comment on eight?
I don't know where we'd add this, Mayor, but would we use reserves and look at property sales, or do we add that?
Combination of the two.
We added number 14.
Yeah, we had number 14 as property sales, yeah.
My comment on using reserves is to be cautious about doing that, and I would favor a loan over just pulling it out and consuming it, and do it if we have a replacement plan.
Maybe it should be use reserve slash loan, but we haven't determined what that looks like.
Right. Well, and I do think it's important that we go back to Councilman Shizka's, and my, let's use what we need to use this year, so that we can maintain what we have now, and also give our market compensation to our employees. So that, that needs to be, because we're talking about something that happens this year, right, mark for our new budget, so we're talking in the fall, right?
Yes. And that's even if we tried to, you know, make a lump sum payment, the reduction in rates would not be effective until the following fiscal year, because it would be reflected in the new valuation. And again, just to make a comment on the reserve and the use, and even number 12, issuance of outside debt or bonds, I mean, those are issues that the council, and we look at the reserves each year during the budget process, and, you know, that would be the time the council would look at those, what the needs are for those, and identify if they wanted to send any, any more of those reserves to PSPRS. I mean, just make it a regular part of your annual budget process.
Any further comments on eight? Okay, I believe there's a consensus of the council to continue to look at the idea of using reserves.
And number nine, municipal income tax. Can't do that by, by state law, so that's.
I think we would lose our state revenue shared funds if we did.
Yeah, it's a bad idea, anyway.
It's prohibited by statute, so if we violated the law, we're done. And then again, like I said before, you know, income tax is the most expensive type of tax to administer and collect, and we don't have a built-in system to collect income tax, and the state certainly wouldn't do it for us. So those two reasons, well, the first reason is just, it's illegal, so strike it.
And some people might wonder if it's illegal, why was it ever even on the list? Because it was suggested to us, and we explored everything that was suggested.
And even if it was legal, why would somebody want to go out of their way to move into a city that has an income tax?
Exactly, yeah. That's right.
What do we get in the way of Arizona shared revenue every year?
Just for income taxes, about 5.2 million a year, just from the state income tax.
So I think that by the fact that it's illegal, we'll just eliminate this, and I think I have a consensus of the council eliminate this option.
Is it illegal to start our own lottery?
No, seriously.
I'm serious.
That could have been number 16.
Unless you create a reservation. I was going to say, Prescott is not a sovereign nation.
What about a big 50-50?
Number 10 is to get out of PSPRS. That's set often out there when we're in the public.
Illegal.
The city is mandated by statute to have a, a public, a separate public safety pension system for its police and firefighters. The statute then goes on to say that from 1968 forward, that system is PSPRS. So, again, we're mandated to be in the system. There's no opting out of the system.
Okay. And even though the current system may someday be changed out, it'll still be PSPRS, and it'll still be...
Yes, if the state, if the state legislature decides to create a new system and mandates that going forward, all new employees go into that new system, or all current employees can opt into that new system, that's a different ballgame. But, but, but whether it's called PSPRS or called something else, the state could create a new, I think we heard yesterday, the state could, in theory, create a new public safety pension system for all, sort of like Tier 3 is kind of a peak, sort of a new, but it's not completely new, and they could create a whole new system for public safety employees going forward. And that's, and so, in that event, the city would still be obligated to be in that new system, more than likely, for all new employees and many, and perhaps current employees who could opt in, but we'd sort of be straddling that fence because we'd be in the old system for the, for those employees that are in the system and the new system for new employees. So, it would be three systems.
Any more comments on 10? Okay, I think I have a consensus of the council that we're going to eliminate this because there's a requirement for us to be in PSPRS.
Number 11 is wait for statewide relief, and as I said earlier, I believe that we heard that Representative Campbell and Representative Stringer said there is literally the palette down in, in Phoenix, Maricopa, the state of Maricopa, to take this on. However, they are working on reforms, the mayor's meeting with other mayors, so there are things that, that we can do as the city to support that. I asked Barry Aaron's yesterday, so if something is done, it will be something that we can use to help us. So, no matter what we choose to do, if the state does do something two, three, five, six, eight years from now, it's something that we could use with when, whatever we're doing. Because if, I think, what was the language that we were talking about, Gene? It was pay down or sooner, if it's paid off sooner, it would go away.
Yes, or sooner, 10 years or sooner.
10 years or sooner, thank you, yeah.
And also, you and Steve Shiska met with Senator Karen Phan.
Yeah.
He said the same thing, the legislature is not going to tackle pension reform this year.
Certainly not to pay the debt.
Any other comments on 11? Yeah, I think it was clear from Barry yesterday that we're not going to see any short-term relief, at least not in a year, maybe two years. If they do start that ad hoc committee, the earliest that they would even start to do anything would be the next legislative session.
Election year.
In 2018, which is election year, yeah. And so, I think I have a consensus of the council that while this is something that we'll continue to look at, it's not something that's going to help us short-term, and so we're going to eliminate this as an option.
And the 12th one that we looked at was...
Did I say that wrong?
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not sure what Mark put up there. It's a little variation there. Added something new.
Yeah, well, we'll continue to work for state relief, is what I heard from council, so, yeah.
Okay.
But not wait for it, but continue to work for it.
Yeah.
And reform.
And you want to put that in red, because the red things are what you all agree on.
Yeah, Mark.
Certainly.
At least conceptually.
Mark, I think I would say relieve slash reform, because we're, we're continuing to work on that. There you go. Yeah. In issue bonds, you know, we, we talked a lot about that, and, and I, and I think sometimes that works, right, Mark, and sometimes it works against you?
Well, and again, I think it's internal borrowing and external borrowing, use of reserve is something council, you know, needs to look at each year during the budget process. Look at where PSPRS earnings rates are, look at, you know, those type of things.
Issue bonds may stay there, but just not as a, a fix for the entire thing right now.
Well, and I think that's what all these are, is just the, you know, the group of items we're going to use to address PSPRS.
You know, we would still need a guaranteed source of income.
Yes, that's right.
Absolutely.
That's right.
If I could suggest, if you're going to leave number 12 on there as a red item, maybe you just call it borrowing, rather than issue bonds, because bonds imply external.
Yeah, internal borrowing.
Maybe just call it borrowing and leave it as an option that you're going to continue to discuss. This, this is basically agreeing the whats, not necessarily the hows. That's the next step, I think.
The only caveat I would have to this specific one is if you're going to issue bonds, in terms of bond market, you would issue bonds now because bond rates are only going to go up, I think, at this point, practically speaking.
Good point, yeah. I mean, rates are very low right now, but, you know, I don't, you know, you can't borrow at low enough rates to overcome a negative earnings at...
I just mean, like, in the next 12 months versus three years out, I don't think issuing a bond is probably a realistic solution.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any more comments on number 12?
Yeah, I had one.
Okay.
Okay, not fully vetted, and I agree with leaving this up for discussion. Very similar to what Mr. Lamar was saying down here, the rates right now are very low. So, if you were to bond, I agree with what Harry's saying, that there's some volatility with bonding at this point in time. But on the other hand, with the rate being what it is, and what the performance failure of the investments of the retirement system is, you know, we're going backwards. Last year, we went backwards 6%. I mean, that's not, that's not a good deal. And if we can go give muni bonds for 3% and 4%, we're picking up on behalf of the taxpayers and the residents of the city somewhere between 2% and 3% a year, which is huge when you look at the overall cause and effect consequence on the total number. So, here again, I would, I would caution against walking away from this too quickly if, if indeed the thought process is to use this tool to lock in an ability to eradicate the liability now.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I can ask, add on to Jim there. I'm not a banker, but let's say that we have a secured funding source, and we went out for bonds, and we secured our debt or our liability. Could we secure that with us and then give it to them as we need to?
It depends on the structure of the loan. Obviously, these loans may not be tax exempt because they're not, we'd have to go with the bond council to determine that. If they were tax exempt...
You have to be there to arbitrage.
Yeah, that's it. If they're tax exempt, you got arbitrage issues with the IRS. But you also have an issue of we don't, as a city, we don't take the risks even that a PSPRS pension takes. You know, we, our investment policy requires us to be very safe. So, even if you, it only costs you 3%, we're not going to be able to invest that somewhere for more than 1% or 1.5% right now before, until we send it to PSPRS. You know, so if your idea...
Get the glaze out of my eyes, so...
If your idea was to issue $80 million worth of debt, put it in the bank, and we're going to send it to PSPRS, $10 million a year, and then we're going to use our fixed income, our, our revenue from our dedicated sales tax to pay off those bonds, you're still losing money on those bonds because we are not going to be recovering what we're going to be having to pay in the interest.
Okay.
And you would not overcome the increase in the, in the bond market, probably.
It's, it's almost easier to talk about what could be a success. You borrow at three or four, and the rate of return on the investment exceeds three or four.
Exactly.
That's basically, so you'd be hedging that they would start to do better than what you borrowed against.
And that's exactly why it's something that needs to be looked at continually each budget year as we do the budget.
So, it should stay in our toolbox.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mark, that, that was part of my point for my overwhelming superance about leaving this on here. I'm talking about eradicating the 78 million now, and using the sales tax initiative as a dedicated resource to resolve the bonds. So, that is one I want to take a look at, because the 7.5% that we collect in sales tax, or the 9-point-something million dollars that we collect in sales tax, may be much more significant than the 4 or 5 million that we're paying on the bond interest. That was my point.
And it's, and it's a good point, Councilman, but as we've discussed on this borrowing, if the PSPRS is not earning that their 7.5 stated rate, or any amount that's higher than what you're borrowing at, you're losing money. Because, you know, we could borrow the money tomorrow, pay them 78.5 million dollars, which we've discussed this before, that's an actuarially determined amount based on their assumed earning rates for the next 50 years. So, if they do have another year where they're at .6, you know, you're going to end up owing again. But again, I, I still think it's a valid thing to have on there to consider each year as we move forward.
Thanks. I'm not quite there with not being a banker and everything to fully understand all this. I'm not the bean counter, you are. And, you know, we come to you for your, your guidance on this sort of stuff. So, I just, it just seems to me is that if what's crippling this community at this timeframe in history is we have a $78 million liability, the PSPRS, get rid of the liability, and let's move forward, and how do we move forward in the best interest of the citizens and the taxpayers? All of, all of a sudden, we have a different liability now, it's not PSPRS. We have a lot, now, we're never going to walk away from PSPRS because we're always going to have police and fire, so you're never going to walk away from that. All right? And you're always going to have that, that responsibility. However, not to the tune that it amassed over a short period of time because of failures of their productivity and their bad investments, which we had nothing to do with either. On, on, on the other hand, looking at this, with the 9.75, 9.75 million, how long would it take to retire what we would owe on the 83 million, or 78 million, or whatever it is, compared to going down the, the street with, with going on a long-range payoff plan with PSPRS?
Well, and, you know, and I went, I went back to this interest slide, you know, just for illustration. You know, this isn't a mortgage, it's not a fixed debt, you know, like, you know, we, the amount that we owe, the 78.5, is based on assumptions. As long as they achieve their 7.5% earnings every year out into the future or better, every year, your point is, you know, extremely valid. It's a lot cheaper to borrow at four, invested at 7.5, we pay off the four, we get that advantage of that positive arbitrage that helps us reduce our liability. The problem you have is you look at this earnings rate on the graph, you know, every time, assume our bond, and again, this, this line is too high, but it's, it's on the graph. So, assume the bond is at this, at this line, anytime they dip below it, it's costing you more to upfront fund it with a fixed rate bond, like, you know, we're talking about. So, that's why we want to pay, we do want to pay it off quicker, we want to just do it in chunks as we go forward in time each year, looking at options.
It is a little bit of a risk, but, you know, 10-year munis for AA bond, AA rated communities are like 2.4.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think it's an unrealistic expectation to think, knock on wood, that PSPRS investments could exceed 2.4.
Absolutely not, and I think it's definitely something that needs to be continued and looked at each year, but at that 2.4, if we had done it, if we had done it in 2015, we would have lost 1.8% because they only earn .6.
It's just something that, it is a risk, but I think it's less of a risk because of low interest rates right now.
Absolutely.
And they're saying their investment expectations are 7.65. You're cutting them in, by two-thirds to say that you need to exceed 2.5 to 3. I mean, I, so I think that there's some validity to considering it.
And definitely, and I, I do too. I think it's very important that we look at it each year, maybe we, we do it in chunks as we talked about, you know, you know, and use the dedicated funding source to repay those.
Okay, any further comments on number 12? Yeah, I think I have a consensus of the council to continue to look at this one and, and look for opportunities when it might be advisable to move forward with some borrowing. And I, I guess we'll use the word borrowing and then put loans in parentheses.
Well, borrowing meaning both external bonds and internal from different funds, despite what Henry says.
Okay.
Where'd he go? He's off. No, he's right there. He's giving you a dirty look right there.
Okay, number 13, variations on the sales tax. This is something that really came from our focus groups with our folks that we, I think, Gene, we had about 15 different organizations and companies represented, and especially from those that sell the large items, because in some communities, they have a lower sales tax rate for big items. So, if it's over $20,000, there's a lower sales, so that's what the variations on the sales tax was. Again, I think it, me personally, I think it kind of muddies the water, and I guess I, I personally would say that let's not...
The three-quarter keeps us lower than the other two communities.
It does, thank you, Steve.
So, why would we ever begin to muddy the water?
You know, Billy, I worked it out on a $50,000 vehicle, and it's 350 bucks at .75. And, you know, I, I think that there are certain people who would leave this community for $350, but I, I can't imagine there to be a mass exodus for 350 bucks.
But Steve, we got to still remember, and I don't want to, I agree with Billy here, but we don't want to just only them to death. It's just only, I understand that, that's, that's, it's money.
Oh, no.
I get your concern.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't, I was saying that if, in fact, that's what we looked at, or we, we don't want to look at variable, because in actuality, it is only $350. And I know 350 bucks is a lot of money to a lot of people, but on a $50,000 vehicle, it kind of puts it in perspective.
Yeah. Mark, can you put that slide up there from last week's presentation?
Which slide is that?
This one from your vacation.
This one?
No, it was the last slide of January 24th, committee recommendations.
That one there?
Yeah. We, we talked about .5, .75, so variations on a sales tax could include discussion of what amount of a sales tax we want, it could include whether or not we have a tiered sales tax, it could include whether or not it's dedicated to public safety as opposed to PSPRS. It's, it's a generic statement, and I just put, asked to put this up here is, you know, it includes some of the things that we talked about.
Thank you, that's true. Other things besides the different rates.
Right.
Thank you, Gene, yeah.
I would like to leave it on there in a generic sense and continue our discussion of consideration of Councilwoman Lamerson's concerns.
And then number 14, selling property.
Well, let's finish this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion on 13?
Under, under the discussion that I just heard, I can see the value of leaving on discussion, because that's what this is, is we're discussing the various different things that we might go to the voters and ask for, and I would say leave it on.
Well, I agree that sales tax is regressive, particularly for those people that are, you know, low income, fixed income, and to ask them to, to pay it, and then the people that can afford the, the high-dollar items, that they would have a graduated sales tax, I think would be not palatable for most of the people, so...
I, I agree, Mayor.
I think I have a consensus that we won't, will not consider number 13 as an option.
Hold on. I heard, I just heard two different things.
Well, there are two different things. That's, there's, there's the different rates for different amounts. I think that's what we're saying to take that off.
Consider that, yeah.
But, but Gene is saying, let's leave this on, Mayor, to talk about whether it's .75 or it's .6 or...
Okay, I understand that. Yeah, what I was talking about...
Right.
Because I, I consider that being back up under where we talked about a dedicated sales tax.
Okay.
You know, that's where we'll decide what that is, if it's going to be .5, .75, 1.
Yeah, I think we could take off 13 because we have number four.
But, yeah. Yeah, it's not, not different rates for different amounts.
This was talking clearly about graduating the sales tax between...
In my mind, too.
Yeah. So, we're all clear on that?
Yep.
All right. Move on.
It's gone.
Billy, we did add number 14, disposition of city properties.
Yep. Yep.
And that would be land, vehicles, anything that is a property? Okay. Any question on the new 14? We've probably already talked about enough, right?
Well, yeah. And I think when you own Del Rio Springs, just some of the places out in Chino Valley that we have no business owning in today's world, it only makes sense to look at them.
And I think that's going to be an item in incoming meetings after our city manager has a chance to do the FAP list to staff and come back with some answers.
And go through it with a fine-tooth comb and have some ideas about what we could list.
Okay.
And when we could list it.
I think I have a consensus of the council that they'll consider number 14 as an option. We've still got a little bit of time left. I guess you can see what direction that we're looking at going right now, and I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody that wants to step on up, do so, and since I want to get as many people up as you can, try and limit yourself to no more than five minutes.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm not going to take five minutes, you'll be glad to hear, but I do want to give you a quick little background.
Okay. Can you identify yourself?
My name is Jerry Weedapole. I'm a lifelong Prescottonian, born here in the '50s. My family came here in the '30s. My father was the Yampi County Treasurer for 30 years before the Jacobs clan took over. I know Steve. I went to school with Steve. I don't know you all, but thank you for coming to our city, Mr. Lamar, I want to say.
Very glad to be here, thanks.
And I'm really happy you've already cut your budget, just like Mr. Trump. Take an axe and start cutting. I do want to say that I have deep roots here, as I just mentioned, but I remember the first centrally Yampi Fire Department, when they had a barn in the country club where they kept an old fire truck. And they had a little skinny hall down next to the old Canary-o Cafe. They were all volunteers. My dad was a volunteer. I used to go with him on weekends when they were building the fire station that's now a restaurant downtown. I used to go down and get in the way when they were mixing cement and laying blocks. Volunteers. Volunteers. This city means a lot to me. I went to school here my whole life, joined the Navy, put in a career with the Treasury, dealt with a lot of bankruptcies. Don't go there. Don't go there. You do not want the feds looking up your rear ends. They will do it, and they'll charge you a whole lot of money, not to mention the attorneys. Don't go to bankruptcy. Bankruptcy is a last resort. You all know that, right?
Oh, yeah.
I went to school at Prescott High. Mr. Vileborg, he taught me how to balance a checkbook. You don't spend more than you take in. Now, I know you guys have worked real hard. I came back here three years ago after I retired, bit my tongue, can't do it anymore. You've worked hard, but you're like digging a hole and throwing the dirt right in behind you. You're getting nowhere. You stand up here and gab all day about a list, which I appreciate, but you don't do anything. I've read the paper for years. Nothing's getting done. We want more trails, we want pickleball courts, all this crap. Don't spend more money that you don't have coming in. You don't spend more going out than you have coming in. Pretty dang easy. Now, I know making a city run is a lot harder than making a family run, but when I didn't have money for my kids, I did something different. I went out and got another job and raised some more money. Had I had the power to raise taxes, oh crap. I can't believe you guys are talking about raising taxes. I am taxed to death. I'm on a fixed income. I'm one of those guys. Why do you want to keep shoving it down the taxpayer's throat? You all ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Do not cut the library. I'll tell my mom. She'll come get you, Steve. And Steve Shiskin knows my mom. You don't want her on your ass. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be humorous here, but I'm trying to make a big impression. I love this city. It was like Mayberry to me growing up. I didn't want to be like Raleigh, the big city. Stop the trails. Stop the unnecessary monuments to everybody. Stop extra spending and run the city until you have extra revenue for all these other frills. Now, most of the people in here probably don't walk on these trails, but they're paying for them. But everybody in here may, God help them, need the fire department, and God bless them all, the fire department and the police. I do love you guys. Something else needs to be cut, you all. Use reserves. Reduce, in fact, Richard Nixon. Freeze spending for a while. Put a spending freeze on. Pay the lights, pay the bills. Don't start new projects. I talk to my friends all the time. They're freaked out. What's going on down there? No more taxes, please. No more taxes. Don't dedicate anything new to anything. Take what you got and deal with it. I get $200 every week. I don't spend 300. I don't look to borrow it. I don't look to do things that are going to create more debt down the road. $47,000 contract to market the city of Prescott? Whose bright idea was that? I mentioned pickleball courts. I know we're not paying for them in full, but we're going to maintain them. Trails. Put a hold on the trails. Who passed $150,000 to draw a road over Bullwhacker Hill? Hell, I'd have done it for $100. That road won't get built for over five years, and you all know it. Those plans will be obsolete. Look at Union Street. All my life, Union Street has been a mess, but thank you for fixing Park Avenue, finally.
You've got 30 seconds.
Thank you. You know what? You'll be happy to hear?
You're done.
I'm done. I want to say thank you, but I'm dead serious. No bankruptcy, no new taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Don't forget your paper.
Good afternoon. I'm Chuck McVeigh, M-C-V-E-Y, 86301. While I'm not a financial planner, I do have a background in finances. And I've given lectures on financial planning to individuals for their retirement, and I've given it to groups. And when you get into taking money from yourself, borrowing it from yourself, and then paying it back, that's the beginning of a disaster for most people. I really recommend you not get into the reserves. Plus, you're telling us that you have silos that are allocated in your budget that you can't touch, but if you move them over to reserves, then you can pull them back and using them and use them. You know, it's a sleight of hand. You're deluding yourselves by getting into that. You're dealing with the miracle of a negative compound interest here. When we dealt with PSPRS as far as a sales tax was concerned in the past, I believe that was $71 million. Now, we're at $78 million. The longer we go on this, the worse it's getting. It's clocking over as we sit here. We're looking at a lot of the things here, and we're trying to come up with easy, simple ways to get money that don't hurt. Included in that, then, would be selling off property. I think selling off property is great. You're looking at reserves. Don't look at reserves. That is going to be a real problem if we go down that path. That's it. Have a good evening, folks.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Richard Steele, Quay Drive, City of Prescott.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm not going to tell you what to do here. I'm not even going to give you my opinion. It's just tough. What I'm going to ask you to do is not hire any PSPRS employees until the 1st of July. Please don't. PSPRS is kicking the living hell out of my town. And I would love to throw a punch at the big unions down in Phoenix and knock them dead on their ass, and this is the way to do it. They're pushing you to hire them. They want them hired right now, before July 1st. Don't do it. Don't set the city back millions of dollars. Instead, hold the line. Freeze the hiring. Wait until July 1st. I have yet to see anyone in this room come up here and complain that Chief Light can't do his job, or that Chief Black can't do her job. No people are here complaining the police and fire can't do their job. I've yet to see it, and I'm at every meeting. So I don't know what the hurry is to get these people on board. There's other ways. We can tread water for a couple of months. If the people in this town can see a light at the end of the tunnel, they'll stand with you. You have this huge liability for PSPRS in this direction, and you're trying to address, and at the same time, you're going in the opposite direction, compounding it, making it worse. How the voters are going to... How are they going to support a sales tax increase or whatever when they see that? They feel betrayed. Send that message to Phoenix. You put this hurt on us, and now it's coming back at you. We're going to hire your people after July 1st. That'll be heroic, for me, anyway. Because I don't see Dan Frye and his people from down in Phoenix sitting in this room tonight. They're not here. But when it came time to hire some people for the fire department, there he was, and the goons from Phoenix were sitting here right with him. Because that's their bread and butter. We don't have unions here in Prescott, but we're under the influence. You're looking at it right here. And they got the money. They got the lawyers. They wrote these rules. They put this on everybody. Hit them back.
30 seconds.
Start doing it now. Thanks.
Richard?
Yes, sir.
Could you hand that stuff to that gentleman, the first speaker? Thank you.
Where?
He's right back there. Anyone else? Come on down.
In regards to reserves, you do not want to accept the risk of being both the borrower and the lender. That's what the disaster is. The other thing is I wanted to note to the council regarding PSPRS. When we went through this last time as far as the sale tax, the president of the Arizona Professional Firefighters Union came up and was in the PV City Council and was making a presentation. During that presentation, it wasn't reported, but he specifically said that the judges who have the same structure told the firefighters that if you support us, we will support you. Just FYI going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary Beth from Prescott. I'm glad you guys are looking at the different options. My frustration, I think, is now that you're finally going to look at a proposal, is now you're looking at the options. And when I spoke to council last week, don't shake your head, Reason Foundation gave you a presentation, it's got to be well over six months ago, and they said, list your assets, list your properties. I think you could have been well down the road of looking at the sale. You could have had things in process. And that's my frustration, is now you're going, you want to put this proposal before the voters. And I think in good faith effort, you could have been well down the road of all those things that Lynn Gilroy and Pete Conson had come before you. And that's my frustration.
In all fairness, we had a change in management.
There was no...
It's the truth.
Okay. But there was nothing. There was nothing in the paper. I didn't see any list. There is nothing brought before anybody.
I think that document that we gave you is over a year old, and we asked the previous, not the best, the previous management, but we asked the previous management, not only last year, but five years prior, to come up with a list of disposable properties. Now, that's never happened, so it needs to happen.
Well, then, you're making my point, Steve. If you're telling me this is going back five years, then this is even more egregious.
Whether it is or not, we have a debt.
Right. And you know what else? This is my problem, too. Everything that you're bringing before is everything to the taxpayer, the taxpayer, the taxpayer. What happened, and I'm going to go before, again, I'm going to beat this dead horse on the hiring. Gene, you made a great point. You said that we were constrained by when these academies started. Who controlled when these academies started? The unions. And there wasn't one city manager. And I don't know who listed them. Mesa, Scottsdale, the Sheriff's Department, not one single person said, hey, does everybody realize that they are all graduating May 25th? They are forcing our hand that we are putting them in Tier 2B. Everyone's making sacrifices except the unions. They force that these people are going in Tier 2B. And this is my problem, is being an advocate for the taxpayer. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I would like to respond, Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead.
Mary Beth, you're saying we haven't been talking about options. We've been talking about options for months and months on this council about what we need to do to take care of this issue. This issue of the unfunded liability has been on the mind of every one of these council members 24/7.
Not as much as mine. I don't see one sale of agreement anywhere on any of these properties. And if it's going back five years, where's even one?
All I'm saying is, you seem to be saying that we haven't done our job or focused on this, and I just want to say that is simply not true. We have worked hard. Our committee has worked hard, all seven of us up here. This is not a one person. This is all of us working together to take care of the city of Prescott. And so I guess I would just say I respectfully disagree.
Councilwoman Aron, you know what? I do believe you've worked hard. My concern and my ire is the only proposal you're putting before all of us in Prescott is a tax increase. And there are so many other options. And that is my frustration, that a tax increase isn't going to solve this. The charts that Mr. Woodfall shows up, that we have faithfully paid our contribution year after year after year, and our contribution rate goes up. Passing this tax increase, if it passes, and I have grave reservations that it will, our tax, our contribution rate is still going to go up.
Hey, 30 seconds.
That's it. Thank you.
Let me just say, city manager, I do remember when Reason Foundation was up here briefing. They did talk about leasing services. So I'm not sure if that's anything that you've taken an opportunity to look at.
I would think that would come under all the alternative service provision, which is six. Leasing, I guess leasing services in terms of which specific services?
Well, I think he used one example of some cities have sold their wastewater treatment plants, and then...
Selling your utilities?
Well, not selling. I think they allowed it to be leased.
Lease them back, yeah. Sure.
So I don't know whether that's something that you've taken a look at.
Yeah, we could look at it. That's a big nut we could look at, though. There's no doubt about it.
And I do know he said at the time that he had other options. That's the only one I remember him saying, but he said he had other options from other cities that if we wanted him to come up here, he would go ahead and give us a briefing on that, so. Looks like we got a couple of people chiming in here. Councilman Shiska.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind everybody that certainly in comparison to our neighboring cities, we are remarkably efficient. When you think about the fact that you not only get municipal services, parks and rec, you get police and fire, you get the library, for what you are paying in this city right now, it's unbelievable. I mean, we're... You go over to our neighbor to the northeast, you'd be paying three times what you're paying in Prescott to get the same services. If you go to our neighbor to the north, you'd be paying four times for the same services. So, and I don't know if you want to look at relative efficiency, but relative to our neighboring communities, we are extremely efficient.
Mayor Brodeur. Thanks, Mayor. I thought part of the comment...
I just got to say one more thing. You know what? We're looking at Prescott, not the Phoenix, not the Yampi, or the Flats, everything else. I don't care if I was in a city, I just don't care if I was in Prescott. I don't care about those other cities, I just want Prescott to quit saying in relation to other cities. I'm talking about this city.
Okay, thanks. We hear you.
...other places is frivolous. You're spinning your wheels again.
We hear you, okay? Mayor Brodeur.
Early on in the conversation, we had service model delivery changes that I'm looking forward to in the '17, '18 budget proposals. And those service models could include lots of different things that are appropriate to this conversation. And it could be with regards to how you deliver, there's various basic services, and you've got water, sewer, streets, fire, police, trash. And we've started to look at privatizing some things with nonessential, and we haven't gone down the road as far as we can go.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Yeah, I just want to recognize the policemen and firemen that are in the audience, appreciate you being here. It was great to be at coffee with cops today. Chief Black, thank you. I also want to recognize all of our employees. I always tell you, Mark has been a saint in constantly providing data because all of the information that we've had today, he provided data so that we knew what the numbers were, and so I appreciate that. I also want to thank the council, I think we've really made headway today, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blair.
I just want to bring one more thing up. We talk about privatizing and looking at different aspects. And when you start talking about our core services and you start talking about police and fire, I want to make sure everybody does truly understand that Central Yampi will not absorb our fire department until our debt is paid off, period. Nor would Yampi County take our department as a metro until that debt's paid off. So regardless of what we do, sitting up here as a group of people as a whole, we have an obligation and we have to take care of it. And I don't think we ever need to lose track of that.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Got a few more minutes here.
I promise this will be short. My name is Phil Good. I'm a Prescott city resident, mayor and council members. I just had one small suggestion. As your co-chairman of the Mayor's Ad Hoc Rehab Silver Living Home Committee, we have a new ordinance that just went into effect in the city. And one of the key components of that ordinance is be able to have enough code enforcement officers to make sure these silver living homes properly comply. So with 11 new employees of the city, how about a suggestion that we bring them on temporarily as temporary code enforcement officers? They could augment Mike Fleming's vast staff of his individual self as a code enforcement officer, and we could get a year's worth of inspections done. Now, all of these sworn officers, firefighters and police officers, will probably be visiting all these rehab homes because 96% of your fire calls are medically based, and our police officers, I'm sure, will frequently be visiting those locations. So it has a lot of positive aspects. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't have anybody on flash of lights up here, so I think your finger is heading for it, so...
I am.
Huh?
I'm going to say something. May I say something?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think we've had a really good discussion today, and I'd like to ask Michael if you feel you have enough information to come back, to structure some options for us to consider, come back to the council with those.
Yes, I think I do. I think the idea was to have these meetings once a week for the foreseeable future, and we're down to one, two, three, four, six options, and some of those options are just ways to fund things maybe a little earlier than waiting until you generated all the revenue.
If I may add, Michael, maybe like next meeting is a regular meeting, that it's an agenda item that we, you bring forward one of these things.
I think that's a reasonable expectation. I think we could probably handle two. I don't think that's unrealistic to try to hammer out a couple of these. Mark, do you? Sure, he says.
Mr. Lamar? What's the date on that?
Actually, our next Tuesday is February 7th, so that's not a regular meeting. That would be a special meeting.
Just beat that, yeah.
Okay. At the very least, we'll try to talk about one of these things, possibly two, if that's realistic for you guys.
So are we not meeting next week?
We are.
Yes, on the 7th, 3 o'clock.
Yep.
Okay, that's right. Okay. Again, city manager and I will have a town hall this Saturday, which we're going to be talking about PSPRS for the general public to give them an idea how we got here, number one. Also, talk about what the outcome was of SB 1428 and Prop 124. And also, we'll try and inform the public of some of the options that we're looking at for new service models going forward. I've contacted about 30 mayors to see if they want to support me and go into the legislature to ensure that they understand that we want something done on reform. And I've had a number of mayors already contact me back and say that they're willing to support us, because they have the same problems that we do. I mean, this is a statewide problem and it's also a nationwide problem. So I'm very fortunate to have some mayors that are willing to come forward and help support me and go into the legislature. The last thing is I'll be talking to the House Government Affairs Committee on Thursday, and they're looking at expenditure limit, but they'll also give an opportunity to talk about some of the situations that we're dealing with here in Prescott. So we'll see how those go, and hopefully we can continue to get that other leg of the stool here, and that is working with the legislature to be effective for us. So I want to thank everybody for coming in today, and I know this is a very difficult topic to work through, and we ask that you continue to give us your ideas and thoughts in the future. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.